Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this regular meeting. I would like to call upon the commissioner of someone's.
Mayor, Commissioner, I'd like to invite my pastor, Saint Paul, to give me a case.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, worthy and beheld in reverence by all your children, we give you humble and hearty thanks for the innumerable blessings without any merit or worthiness on our part that you have bestowed on us. Bestow your grace on all nations of this earth, bless especially our country and its inhabitants and all who are in authority. Let your glory dwell in our land that mercy and truth, righteousness, and peace may everywhere abound. We commend you with the care of all of our schools and ask that you grant to our children that they may grow in useful knowledge and virtue and bring forth wholesome fruits of life. Save us from violence and discord, confusion and pride, arrogance in every course of evil action. Make us who come from many nations with many different languages a united people. Defend our liberties and give those whom we have entrusted with the authority of government the spirit of wisdom that there may be justice and peace in our land. When times are prosperous, let our hearts be thankful, and in times of trouble, do not let our trust in you fail. Lord God of hosts, stretch forth your mighty arm to strengthen and protect the women and men who serve in the armed forces of our country. Give them courage and loyalty, that in all things they may serve honestly and without reproach. We pray especially this day for those who are deployed on foreign soil separated from their loved ones. Watch over and defend both them and their loved ones during this time. Oh God, you've always been the help and support of your people. Remember the unemployed and the underemployed in the day of their trouble and need. Give them faith to cast their cares on you, for you care for them. Preserve them from all bitterness and resentment, and teach them to trust in you. In your mercy, increase the opportunity for their employment, that with thankfulness they may earn and eat the bread of contentment. Give to your people everywhere the spirit of love to share in the blessings with the hungry. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us. We ask especially for our mayor and city council care in this great city of Harlingen, that they may be guided by your spirit, be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolution, and unwavering in duty, that under them we may be governed quietly and peaceably. We ask all of this through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this regular meeting. I would like to call upon the commissioner of the meeting. I would like to call upon the commissioner of the meeting. I would like to call upon the commissioner of the meeting. I would like to call upon the commissioner of the meeting.
Well, welcome all of you, especially those of you who are visitors or frequent attendees. Of course, we'd like everybody to come, more view regular attendees here at the meeting, but especially welcome those of you who are here maybe for your first time. Item one is the presentation of proclamation proclaiming the month of May as elder abuse prevention month. Lee Aliso Castellano, Homer Rodriguez, Galastrama are here to seek that proclamation. You are. Come on. Come on over here. Because they want to take a picture and have the look at it that way. Welcome you for being here, and we're going to present this proclamation to you. Whereas the people who are elderly or who have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of the city of Harlingen, Texas, by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. And whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. And whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. And whereas in 2011, there are eighty-two thousand seven hundred forty-one completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abused in Texas, of which fifty-eight thousand sixty-eight were confirmed. And whereas elder abuse is a grossly underreported, because the elderly who are being abused find it difficult to tell anyone, are usually ashamed, sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women at all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they're in good health or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods or in suburbs. And whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim May to be elder abuse prevention month. The city of Harlingen urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect the people who are elderly or have disabilities. Do you have anything to say?
Yes. On behalf of Adult Protective Services, thank you, Mayor, thank you, commissioners. We would like to thank you all for recognizing and naming May elder abuse prevention month. And myself and my coworker, Ben Adison, over here for y'all. See, it's very important for anybody that suspects elder abuse, please call our 1-800 number. Yes, they'll be in our pamphlets, 1-800-252-5400. It's not only child abuse, it's also elderly abuse. I know a lot of our clients, our family members, sometimes they're not even aware that we do this. But we're here to help out our clients or citizens here in Harlingen, in all of town and county. So on behalf of Adult Protective Services, thank you.
We appreciate you bringing this to our attention and making sure that everybody in the city is aware of the need for our purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is presentation of proclamation proclaiming the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2012, as Drinking Water Week. And, can you get the pamphlet? Anybody else in the board or staff want to come up?
No. I think I got this by default.
Well, this is good when you go to the, you know, we really probably ought to support our waterworks and not their water. I know if their board member, board meeting, you don't get bottled water, you get...
We get tap water on ice, yeah.
Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource. And whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to the access to safe water. And whereas we're all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, to get involved in local water issues. Now therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of May 6th, June 12th, 2012, as Drinking Water Week. And we urge all citizens to recognize the importance of drinking water week. This is one of the basic things that the city of Harlingen provides to the great men and women of the Harlingen Public Facility and the board to give great leadership to. People just expect that water to turn on in the morning, make their coffee and that toilet to flush. And it doesn't just happen by magic. Somebody's really making that happen, and we appreciate everything that your organization does. Thank you.
Thank you. This coincides with the American Water Works Association Week, with Drinking Water Week, so this is a national observance. So everybody drink up a water that is...
Thank you, Kevin. Item three, presentation of proclamation proclaiming the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. And I sort of have a, sort of have an idea who might be here to receive that. I don't know what's, why I'm singling you guys out.
Yeah, pro call.
If you come on up here, a pro call in there. This will at least, this will at least make a more entertaining photograph than the one with Kevin. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country. And whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected, and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. And whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for our motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I Chris Boswell, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of May 2012 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, and urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. Here by King.
I am.
Mr. King presents this proclamation to you.
If I look over here.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Basically, you've seen the ads on TV where you see the motors pull out in front of the invisible motorcycle. We don't want to be the invisible motorcycle. So make sure when you look, look twice, and maybe even just hesitate a little bit when you look. Also, a lot of you are starting to get into motorcycling because you can get a whole lot more miles out of the gallon of gas on a motorcycle than you can in your trucks.
Dave, you could have, you know, worn your gear tonight.
Yeah. 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 Okay.
Thank you very much.
And then item four is presentation of certificates of appreciation for assistance and due diligence. I would call upon the pro temp, all to help assist.
These are actually certificates of appreciation presented to a few city employees. Long overdue for the services and dedication in support for the city. So I'm going to start off, ring you a 1-1-1-1, ring everybody up, okay, and we'll line them all up. First one is the certificate of appreciation presented to Elida Mendoza. Elida, is she here? Yes, come here.
Tammy DeGan, our community development director, Tammy.
Josh Wusty.
Javier Zora, our city engineer.
Karina Garza, come on.
And Amanda Alizondo, our city secretary.
Diana, where are you? I hate to say, I hate to say this, this is the person that keeps all my events and times, is, are you, are you ready, you know, this is in the clock? I forgot, are you dressed?
Okay, Carlos Yanena, our city manager.
First, Dan.
And David, our assistant.
And Dan Serna, director of load works.
These people work like you will not believe, you know. We're only as good as the staff behind us, and this proves it. And I'm also doing this for all the help that I've got for the last two years in my district. So I really appreciate it.
We appreciate all our city employees, especially the leadership that these folks have given, but all our city employees are great, and we recognize that. We want to ask you to tell them thank you on our behalf to go back to your department. Thank you. There was some time constraints and has to take an item out of order. It's an executive session item, which is item 20C, closed executive session, discuss the following, for chapter 51, subchapter D, BTC and government code sections 5087 and 5171, direct commercial financial information, including prospect known as prospect of capital, and rent and family development, level of city commissions, because I think I'm going to take it out on the policy of negotiations, or any possible creation of territory, discussion with the city attorney. Is there much to go in the executive session?
Second.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we're going to go to the back room, and we will try to make this as quick and fast as we can, and be back out here to conclude the rest of the meeting.
I'd like the record to flag that Commissioner King has not been participating on this item. Has Bob Conover participated?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're out of executive session. Back, you know, the session, going to item one, consider to take action to adopt and approve a resolution that authorizes the creation of a chapter 380 economic program and negotiations, and execution of the chapter 380 economic program between the city of Harlingen and Rent and Family Development Liberty.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we take action to adopt the resolution that authorize the creation of the chapter 38 agreement, Rent and Family Yes, modified under executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, side motion carries. Item 22, consider to take action on a resolution expressing the city's intention to reimburse with tax exempt proceeds costs incurred to finance improvements related to the proposed project Uncle, Rent and Family Development Liberty Project.
I'd like the record to reflect that Commissioner King has abstained from this item as well as Bob Conover's interest.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we take action to approve the resolution expressing the city's intention to reimburse with tax exempt proceeds costs incurred to finance improvements related to the proposed project Uncle.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, motion carries.
Second.
All right, thank you. We'll go back to item five, always announce about events. Does anyone like to announce any, any events?
Yes, your mayor, we'd like to let you know, my name is Doug Robinson, I live at 2425 Ed. Carey Number 700, New Harlingen, 78550. Besides being a resident of the city of Harlingen, we'd just like to inform the council that our Kids' Day will be taking place May 17th, where every kid comes in the ballpark for free. Those letters have been sent to the appropriate schools and superintendents, and the invitation is being sent from as far south as Brownsville, all the way as far north as Westlaco, and up into the Raymondville area as well. So we'd just like to take this time to let everyone know that May 17th is our Kids' Day coming to the ballpark, where everybody, as far as the kids, come in for free that day. Thank you.
I'd like the record to flag that Commissioner King has returned to his Commissioner's seat.
All right, thank you. Tomorrow is the job fair, which is big tomorrow.
At the community center. At the community center.
At the Mers Community Center, it's a debt fund sponsored by the city of Harlingen, KGVT, Chelmsford.
Cameron Workforce.
All right, so we look forward to that event tomorrow. Any other announcements of the April events?
I believe tomorrow's also National Day of Grader. That'd be an event at MMA, I believe at 10 o'clock, and then at First United Methodist at 12.
All right, so we welcome everybody to participate in those events. It's going to item six, which is the approval of the minutes of special meeting in March 26, 2012. Is there a motion to approve March 12th?
I have a correction. It's a Maria de Morris announcement.
Where's it? What page is it? Page 11.
Well, we're finding, is it, is that on board one or two?
No. That's an introduction. It's for me.
Oh, okay. 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 On, is there a motion? And then on, well, we'll do these, we can do these together, regular meeting. There will be four. On page six, line one, or rather, line three, it should say, this project will create 24 full-time jobs and, and investment of $3 million, not at, and investment of $3 million. At, and. Any other, any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, make a motion we approve the minutes for special meeting in March 46 and regular meeting of April 4.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda, I hope, 78, through each of the board, consent agenda on the final reading.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both flags on, motion carries. Item eight, consider to take action to authorize the mayor of the city of Harlingen to secure grant funds, $29,387 available to use for justice under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Program fiscal year 2012. Locals' legislation to purchase equipment and mobile data computers to replace some of the existing inborn systems. Chief.
Mr. Ranger, commissioners, actually, the grant is specifically for that purpose, and one of their priorities right now is to pursue technological advancements, and basically, we just want to get some computers and funding there, we just want to pursue it.
That's it. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we take action to authorize, on behalf of the city of Harlingen, to secure grant funds. Department of Justice.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Item nine, consider to take action to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement with the city of Harlingen and KGVTX Communications to provide marketing services to the city of Harlingen Commission to Visiting Bureau.
Hi, good evening, Commissioner, your mayor. We are, the CDB recently launched a RFQ for a full-service advertising agency, common practice amongst CDBs, when you are building a brand, as Harlingen is, to bring in visitors and tourists into our community. And we received all of the proposals. They were reviewed by CDB staff, city leadership, our CDB board, several of our CDB board members, and a resolution of support from our CDB staff was approved at our last board meeting to move forward with the highly, the highest-ranked agency, which is KGVTexas. They are not affiliated with our local news affiliate. They're out of San Antonio, and all of you received the proposal that to review, and Matt Moore, who is the executive vice president, is here. If you have any questions, I'm also here to take any questions that you might have regarding that proposal.
The proposal's very impressive in the resume and the practice and all the other work that's been done. We hope that when you're done, you'll be able to add some very sufficient, you'll be wanting to add what you did for Harlingen to your client list and your business achievements. Is there a motion to authorize the management negotiating agreement?
Second.
Motion second.
The only question I hope is, is when you guys start doing this, is he going to come out with some kind of like a calendar, agenda, plan that he'll be able to make copy sent to us, so we will still have to...
Absolutely. We will certainly, all of the stakeholders, which definitely are all of you, and provide all the information.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. And this is just a negotiating agreement, I disagree.
They don't, we'll come back to that.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion, second.
Two motions, two seconds.
Or a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both flags on, motion carries. Item ten, consider orders on first reading to amend 2006 International Building Code under leading section, page 15.3, Appendix H, wind load.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. As you may recall, a couple meetings back, we did some revisions and amendments to the sign ordinance, and as part of that, there were some inconsistencies between the requirements in the sign ordinance and the building code with regard to engineered signs in the building code. And Appendix H required signs that are eight feet or higher, and the sign ordinance 25 feet or higher. In order to make it consistent and not confusing, the recommendation was to change the building code and eliminate the requirement there, and just have the 25-foot requirement in the sign ordinance only. So we're following through on that, and this is just an amendment to that section to remove that requirement out of the building code. Have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Item 8 is public area. Would you like to speak for or against the amendment to the International Building Code?
For the record, Jose Rovia Jr., 23, Jose Rovia, Harlingen, Texas. This particular sign ordinance, you know, I'm trying to make heads tells of what Mr., what he was saying right now. And a lot of the problems that we're having right now still with the sign ordinance is people are still having problems as far as engineer, where it requires engineer and not require engineer. I would like that the, when a person walks into that building and tries to conduct business, that they're made aware of the sign ordinance and be part of the package, because what we're having problems with is, I know a particular business, and what they did was they just said, we're going to put up our sign on Sunday, to avoid, you know, this permits process. You know, I believe and I know for a fact from a lot of businesses are complaining that a lot of this sign ordinance still has a lot of work that we need to really look at and start addressing the issues, because it's hurting Harlingen, and businesses are bypassing. And along those lines, you know, when we have that, we also have, you know, not, this morning, I heard from one of my friends who said, I bypassed the city permit office when I remodeled my, my, my port. This is ridiculous, what we're having to go through. Thank you.
All right, so you want to speak for or against this ordinance? You'll have to give us your address.
284 South Augustus Thomas Road, H. Stop is 697. I use that for my mail.
What's your address?
In Harlingen. 284 South Augustus Thomas Road.
All right, thank you.
I said it three times, and you're taking my minutes. I am against it, because it's very, very tricky. Downtown, you don't have to go that far, just go downtown, downtown on some of those streets, they don't even have signs, and they have businesses. But of course, the building belongs to build the brook, and he can get away with it. There's absolutely no sign out there. And you use the word engineer, not everybody can afford an engineer to do the engineering for them. So that's kind of a double standard in the city of Harlingen. And if you want to keep businesses, you have to go open and buy by the law. So if I can find a places that have no signs downtown, I'm sure somebody else can do the same thing. Thank you.
So you want to, else, might speak for or against the amendment to the ordinance? Here now, the first, oh, carrying, go ahead, B, just consider to take action to adopt and approve orders on first reading to amend 2006 International Building Code, leading section H 105.3, Appendix H, wind load, as suit trade read caption.
An ordinance amending the 2006 International Building Code, ordinance number 08-15, by deleting Appendix H, section H 105.3, wind load, providing for publication or date the other matters related to foregoing. three, wind load, providing for publication or date of other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, just for, I think a lot of the problems we have is the international building code is in conflict with our ordinances. So I encourage staff to keep looking into other building codes, things like that, because I think there's a lot of conflict and that's what's confusing to the public. So I'm glad this is the first step.
I think one of the things too is, we've been talking about a one-stop shop where you can go to City Hall, whether it's a sign, house, building, whatever it is. Everything is together in a package. And I don't know how far along you are, and we talked about that last year. So I don't know how far along you are, can improve something like that together. With that, it would make it a lot easier, as far as information-wise, for the people coming in. And I think the process will go faster.
Okay. Is there any other discussion regarding this amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed by sign, motion carries. Item eleven, consider take action to approve the one-lot final plan of proposed teacher subdivision consisting of five acre tract land out of block five, sir, both subdivision survey two ninety-four, Evercany, Texas, located in West Side, Dilworth Road, approximately six hundred and seventy feet north of Mayfield.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The appman is requesting a preliminary final plan approval for a one-lot residential subdivision. This subdivision is located outside the city limits. It's on the west side of Dilworth, Dilworth Road, excuse me, north of Mayfield Road. All items of preliminary final plan checklist have been addressed. Staff is recommending approval of the file.
So moved for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, consider take action to approve the allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars to museum reserve funds for maintenance, improvements to the museum buildings, THC and intrusion, and power line systems.
Mayor, Commissioners, we are requesting use of the allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars for reserve funds for these items. Included in these items are the porches on Long Sea Hill Home and the El Paso Real, leveling of Long Sea Hill Home, removal of the cabinetry in the Long Sea Hill Home kitchen to make it more historically accurate, rebuilding and painting of the Long Sea Hill Home shutters, a new fire and intrusion alarm panel. That thing has gotten so old that it can't be serviced anymore because there are parts of it before. Replacement of the air conditioning system for exhibit hobby in the theater room, replacement of flooring in the historical museum, and the demolition of cabinetry and display cases in the historical museum, which are in line with our goal of renovating the exhibits in there. Moving this twenty-five thousand dollars out of reserve would leave, out of this fund, would leave ninety-two thousand dollars in museum reserves. We are projecting a eight to ten thousand dollar vegetary surplus at the end of this year. And that, along with the museum association's help, will enable us to keep a year's operating expenses in museum reserves.
I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve the allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Thank you.
Carries, all right. Keep our museum in good, good shape. Joe, strike. Thank you. Consider take action approved by resolution acceptance of the national air force budget for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve.
Mayor, Commissioners, before I get started on the budget, I would like to inform you of something that came to light near the airport at three o'clock this afternoon. For the last two days, we've had an FAA inspector from Fort Worth visiting the airport for their annual safety inspection. We had an out briefing today at three o'clock, and we were pleased and very proud to announce that we had a perfect inspection, which is a very rare occurrence for commercial airports. So I want to make it aware of that. As far as the budget is concerned, the airport board yet on April sixteen to consider the budget. And to summarize, the operating revenues are expected to be less than the original budget passed at the beginning of the fiscal year by one hundred and eighty-six thousand. That will leave our operating, operating revenue projected at the end of the year to be six million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Operating expenses, on the other hand, are anticipated to decrease by one hundred and one thousand, four hundred dollars. The total operating expenses is now expected to be five million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred, leaving the net income at one million, nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars. On the capital expense, capital improvement side, the budget will decrease by one hundred and fifty-three thousand to leave us at three million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. The projected cash investment balance at the end of this fiscal year is projected to be four point two million dollars, which is an increase of about two hundred and sixty thousand over what we projected beginning of the fiscal year.
Mike? I'm sorry, I have to ask a question before you continue. Do any of these revenue items affect you?
Thank you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have concerning the budget.
Michael, you have an expense increase than U.S. Customs by a hundred thousand dollars. Can you give us nothing on what we're doing with U.S. Customs and how it's going?
Yes, Sir Commissioner. We, we're expanding the hours. We're going from an eight-hour time of occupancy in the office to sixteen hours. This is to provide our customers at the airport additional flexibility in their scheduling. Right now, THL is servicing Arlington via Monterrey, Mexico. And so this allows them to come in about nine o'clock every weekday evening, clear customs, and then continue on to their Cincinnati.
Any progress on the other aviation coming in and utilized in U.S. Customs?
Commissioner, we are working very diligently on trying to gain some additional service.
Do you think that will cause an increase also?
Absolutely.
Do you have any expectation when that will?
I wish I could tell you, but with everything going on in Washington, or in some cases not going on, it's just hard to say.
So question then, U.S. Customs, that's exclusively for cargo?
It is not exclusively for cargo. However, with the requirements that we have placed on our office at the airport, it's, it's really impractical, for the most part, for general aviation and passenger traffic at this point. So we're working to change that.
Are we getting any, over the lead times for customs or?
Well, that's what we're working on right now.
And definitely, capital being one of the most important.
Agreed.
Okay. Any, you can finish your presentation or do you need to continue?
Well, Sir, that's it unless you have any further questions.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve the Valley International Airport budget amendment request.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider take action to approve my resolution acceptance anticipated third renovation administration grant offer number three thousand and forty-eight dash zero one zero one dash zero five three dash two thousand and twelve, of approximately one million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for the construction of North General Aviation apron area.
Again, Mayor, Commissioners, we have been informed by the Federal Aviation Administration that we should be expecting to receive a grant offer in that amount to fund ninety percent of the construction cost associated to the North General Aviation apron area.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve by resolution acceptance of the Federal Aviation Administration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed by sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider take action to approve fire resolution, personnel policy amendments to the Valley National Airport personnel policy.
Mayor, Commissioners, the airport board has approved a couple of amendments to our personnel policy amendment. And of course, the city charter requires the policy also be approved by the city commission. So I'm here before you tonight on this particular subject. The first one deals with cell phones and personal listening devices while performing their duties at the airport. And the second one relates to tardiness policy at the airport. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to step out of the chair on item sixteen, I filed.
Thank you.
All right. Item number sixteen, discuss and take action to approve an agreement between the Development Corporation of Arlington, Inc. and J. Handgrove Group, LTD, attachment agreement development.
Mayor Protown, Commissioners, agreed before you, an agreement that was passed, went before the EDC board and was passed, and we request to be approved by the commission. The project is a four and a half million dollar project hotel, seventy-one rooms. It's a Kendallwood, Candlewood Suites Extended Stay Hotel. And they're, they're ready to move on, on that project. I'll answer any questions if you have.
What's the timeline on that?
I'm sorry.
The timeline?
They'll, they'll be under construction within probably the next month, month and a half. But they're, they're going through the, the, the approval of their plans right now. They're sitting up there in the planning, engineering.
Mayor Protown, I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve the agreement with the Development Corporation of Arlington. I would say.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Please ask the mayor.
Oh, you don't have to ask him. You make it there.
Terry didn't want to leave. Probably smiling. Item seventeen, consider take action to highly deserve negotiated, like bargain, a labor agreement with the city and Arlington Professional Law Enforcement Association for fiscal year beginning October third, two thousand and twelve.
Mayor, City Commissioners, on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve, the city received a written notice that the Arlington Professional Law Enforcement Association intends to bargain economic and non-economic issues for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twelve. The letter is attached in your packet. The city has customarily in the past hired the law firm of Dent Navarro Rocha and Bernal. Rick Navarro is actually here today, a partner with the firm, to answer any questions regarding any proposed legal services agreement that's attached in your agenda packet.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. City attorney has stated the situation correctly. There's a notice of intent to bargain that's been filed with the police contract. And we've handled the collective bargaining negotiations for the city ever since the city became a collective bargaining city. And so we are fairly familiar with the issues, the process, the personalities, the players. We have a good working relationship with the union, and we can do a good job for you on this next bargaining round. I can answer questions that any of you may have.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on, on this.
Understood.
So cities with, that have departments with collective bargaining, do cities ever negotiate by themselves, for themselves, or do they always hire out someone? Or give me a percentage. How, how does this all play out?
Cities can negotiate the contracts on their own using in-house counsel. We see the full range of arrangements, from having the matter handled exclusively by outside counsel, which we do, to having us serve in a supportive capacity sometimes, where we simply are in a second-chair kind of status, and the contracts are negotiated by someone within the city, their city attorney, city manager, or some other designated person, or any combination thereof. I, I can't give you, you know, a specific rule of thumb on that. Every city is, depending on the situation, is a little bit different. We, we think the situations where we negotiate the original contract as outside counsel because we have a lot of experience with it, that we can get you started on a very good baseline contract, and then serve in a support capacity after that. That is what happened here. We negotiated the original, after the city became a collective bargaining city, we handled both of the police and fire original contracts. You have very good contracts in place. There have been no agreements out of them, no arbitrations, and they are structured quite well. But they are up, and so it's a question of negotiating. I think the issues will be largely fiscal. It's possible there will be other issues. Commissioner Castillo is very familiar with that.
The Law Enforcement Association will be, you anticipate they'll be represented by counsel experience in collective bargaining?
They will, they will be using the statewide association group to negotiate. They will be using one of their professional negotiators with counsel, with Cleet counsel.
And they, they do this all the time?
That's, they do a lot of negotiations throughout the state, yeah. And they're, they're also very experienced at it. I will say that this, this type of negotiation, it's always good to have some representation where they specialize in this area of law. And Rick Navarro's offices, I know personally, firsthand, that they've done an excellent job for the city. And offices like them, I think it's always good for the city to employ them because of their specialized area of practice.
Don't you actually agree, though, that having hired outside legal counsel to do this is really a lot better than us doing it because you want to be impartial, but also with the ultimate interest of the party, am I right?
Correct. We, we think it's important to try to, to have a good working relationship with the union and the memberships. Obviously, there's different interests that are being negotiated, the city's fiscal interest and the chief's management authority. We're, we want to protect that. But, but this isn't a, this isn't like a lawsuit where you have adverse parties, the adverse issues, but in the end, everybody's got to work together, get along, and we certainly try to achieve that, you know, in the end. And so we, we shoot for that, and we've accomplished that here in the city of Arlington.
Well, I think the key is that we want to win, win, right?
Absolutely.
The cities, taxpayers, and for our police force to, because our first responders that protect us, if we can compensate them competitively, which out in, you know?
And we have all that data, Commissioner, from all the other cities that we work with and from the?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I mean, it's key. So, so as Mr. Castillo pointed out, it's beneficial for everybody to have specialized representation on both sides. And we definitely need the city to have specialized representation. And Happy said that I want to go ahead and make the motion to take action to approve.
I have some more questions.
Well, we can discuss after we make.
Well, he's, he's making a motion, and we can still, you can still ask questions.
I'll second.
I'll, I'll call for discussion in thirty seconds. Go ahead.
Okay. Cleet, what is Cleet?
Cleet is a combined law enforcement association in Texas. It's one of the oldest police unions in the state of Texas. Mr. Ron Delord was one of the founding members of that organization. It is a reputable police association organization. They have their headquarters in Austin. And they are involved in the policymaking and design level at the legislature in terms of protecting police officer rights. They are involved in civil service, disciplinary appeals, and representation of officers. It's my understanding that they also have programs, insurance programs, and that kind of thing for their members, and, and provide services to individual law enforcement personnel. That's one of several police associations in the state of Texas. It's, it's one of the better-known ones. And, you know, that, they represent the interests of the police officers.
And I'm curious to hear, do you work with other cities or just Arlington?
I work with quite a number of other cities. I?
Valley-wide or state?
Statewide, statewide. We represent San Antonio, Fort Worth, Austin, Corpus, Lees County, San Antonio, you know, all of the smaller and larger cities. We do quite a bit of work.
One of the other points too is that there's not very many people like Rick that actually do a lot of the bargaining in the state.
It's kind of a niche practice, so.
But they, but although Rick?